Item number 10. Discussion in public hearing on a future land use map amendment. Request for a portion of the property referenced as parcel 069, tax map 142, north of Old Ingalls Building, 20 acres to change from future land use map from medium density residential to high density residential. Horn Properties Incorporated applicant.
You have some people that want to speak on this. Just as an overview of this particular request. Let me get that. This is a request to change the future land use map for part of this parcel. This is a 41 acre piece of property and the request is to, it's all currently designated on the future land use map and our comprehensive land use plan is medium density residential. And that basically is areas that have been identified as maybe being appropriate for densities of six to eight dwelling units per acre. So their request is to re, is ultimately to rezone, which is a different action item, the next item. The lower or southern roughly 20 acres of the tract to R6, which is multi-family residential. And that district provides for potentially up to 12 dwelling units per acre. So that would exceed the prescribed density associated with the current future land use designation of six to eight dwelling units per acre. So to be consistent, which we suggested the applicant, they needed to at least try to change the future land use map so that if they did yet were successful in changing that, that the future land use map would be consistent with their zoning map amendment request. And the future land use map would need to be high density residential for an R6 zoning district request. So that inconsistency between the future land use map and the zoning map has always been a point that the staff has mentioned when the applicant has come before us on this matter in the past. So they're trying to attempt to address that at this time through this future land use map amendment. And looking at this or any other change to the future land use map, one of, some of the things that staff takes into consideration would be what's, you know, what are the current future land use designations in the surrounding area? You know, what is the developed, you know, the existing plan of development in the area? What's the current zoning in the, in the general area? And what's the infrastructure situation in the area and whether the change to the future land use map is compatible with all those considerations? So in looking at that, what we did was just kind of looked at the part, the area and then kind of started comparing it to what's around it in those different, with those different considerations. So to the immediate north, it, of course, it's medium density residential and that's not being proposed to change. And that's really currently undeveloped. If you go to the south immediately, that is actually a B1 buffer zoning district. It's a tree covered area between their, well, it's kind of on their property, but it's basically to buffer them from the Old Ingalls Shopping Center development. And if you go south of that, you've got an area that's zoned, general commercial, C1. And that's the Old Ingalls Shopping Center building and really the whole area to the west as well. And if you look at that area on the future land use map, it's purple. And that's mixed use neighborhood. So when you look at mixed use neighborhood, that allows for a density of up to eight dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with medium density residential. And that would have to be part of a larger kind of neighborhood convenience commercial development. So, you know, that's a future land use that's commercial in nature, but it has a provision for the allowance of residential up to a density cap of eight units. To the east of the area that they're requesting to change, you've got the Village Green Shopping, Village Green subdivision, part of that, and Boring Road. The Village Green, that part of Village Green is shown as very low density residential, two to four dwelling units per acre. Really frankly, the developed density in Village Green is really under two units per acre. So if you go to the west immediately, you've got the villages of Farragut Senior Living Community. That currently has 88 suites. There's a plan to be about 38 units in the memory care and about 64 independent freestanding and detail, and two family buildings. So the density basically at build out for that is roughly 8.23 units per acre for that senior living community. So that's the most, kind of the highest density that you've got in the immediate area there. If you look at some of the surrounding subdivisions, you go northwest to Baldwin Park and they have a density, developed density of about 2.46 dwelling units per acre. And then Waverly Court, that is over on Smith Road, is at about 4.37 units per acre. There's no properties in the general area that are currently designated as high density residential. So really in just kind of basing the staff's assessment of all those characteristics and considerations of the immediate area surrounding this, you know, the request to high density residential would provide for, you know, developed densities that would really notably exceed both the prescribed and existing developed densities in the area. The densities that are provided for in its current land use designation would be more compatible with the things that I just mentioned, like the mixed use neighborhood, for example, or the senior living community density to the west. So as far as the infrastructure, we all know that Boring Road is a pretty substandard road, that section. And certainly any development that happens in this area, we'd probably have a required access to Boring Road as well as Village Commons Boulevard to the west. So that would require some significant improvements to Boring Road, especially for, you know, a high density residential land use and zoning district because you're putting a lot more potential traffic in the area. I know that the intention has been, it's been expressed during previous meetings that the intent here is to construct a senior targeted apartment development, basically, with a density of really around 10 units per acre. And that's, and that's fine. It's just the town has a limited ability to control that. A lot of that can be ultimately market driven. And it, you know, that's just, that's something that really would have to be, you know, something we would think about because it's really, the town itself has limited ability to, to control those aspects of the project. So really, you know, from our perspective, probably smaller footprint buildings, less height would be more compatible with the various considerations that I've just covered. So we would not be able to recommend approval of resolution PC-21-11 to change the future land use map from medium density residential to high density residential for this part of this particular parcel. Anybody have any questions on that?
If I have any questions or comments from Mark?
Obviously related to the next item too, but yeah, that that's.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening. My name is Michael Patterson. I'm the executive vice president of Horn Properties. Our address is 412 North Cedar Bluff Road. I have with me tonight John Wright. He's been the development manager on this and the two of us have kind of been working this hand in hand with Mark over the last several months. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting. John and I were sitting outside just kind of discussing this and as I sit there and thought about this particular application in front of you all this evening, I thought to myself, it's, you see in life how things just kind of come full circle and this is kind of one of those moments for me. I've been with Doug for almost 25 years now and in 2010, we sat in his conference room at Cedar Bluff and the planning commission then had put together a committee. And at the time, they were developing a land comp plan that was going to be the guide and benchmark, you know, for things to come in the, in this city for the next decade or longer. And they were kind enough to come and meet with Doug because Doug's a large property owner here in Farragut. And this particular tract behind Ingalls, the one we're discussing this evening, at the time, we were discussing the 41 acres and now we, we're, we're here before you tonight, we've reduced that down to 20, but at the time, back in 11 years ago, it was 21 acres. And we sat there with the members of the commission and, and talked about our long-term goals for that property, what we envisioned. We had always talked about bringing a road just west of the Farragut Press at that signal and signaling that intersection and kind of bringing in a, a nice boulevard. And then that, from that main road, it kind of branching off. And at the time, you know, assisted livings at, you know, think about it 11 years ago, those weren't popping up. They were kind of the new fresh idea, so to speak. So that wasn't really part of the discussion, but we definitely, at that time, we were talking about multifamily. And 11 years ago, that seemed like a good idea and it was adopted. For, until 2018, had we been here three years ago, we could have, what we're presenting tonight, more than likely would be passed. It was eight to 12 units per acre. We're now asking, we're in that nine to 12 range, but more specifically, we're at 10. And, you know, Mark made a good point, well, if you approve this, yeah, clearly it states nine to 12. We're here in front of all these people, in front of the television and, and just, we're here for 10 acres or 10 units per acre. That, that's our goal. If we could get 10, we don't need 12. And ultimately, we don't want to put together a multifamily unit that this, this particular unit is, it is cohesive with what's around us. We've got the assisted living, the memory care is coming down the pike. We're talking about a senior living development, a community of 55 or 50 and older. There's not going to be 18-year-old kids driving in late at night, playing the radio loud, speeding, throwing litter on the, it's none of that. These are responsible adults. And you kind of hate to say this, but the transition is, is you come to this senior development and then as you get older and your body is somewhat limited, you transition over to the assisted living and then, you know, maybe the memory care, hopefully not, but potentially. But that, that's kind of our goal here. We're, again, it's just kind of come full circle. In 2018, it was changed. And now we're asking for part of that property, not the 41 acres, but 20, to just come full circle again and say, hey, look, for eight years, it was okay. It was adopted up, up until four weeks ago, if you looked at the land comp plan, it was still showing the, you know, the old plan there. So, but, but that's kind of what we're looking at. I mean, if you look to the south of us, we've got the Ingalls Center that we developed and then sold to Robert Ingall. So I don't think most owners of shopping centers love multifamily behind them. That just increases foot traffic within their stores. To the west, we've got the assisted living, which is, per our math, we were a little bit over nine units per acre, but I think, I'm, I'm sure Mark's right at 8.4, but, you know, here we are at asking for 10. So, and then another good thing too, that I think that needs to be brought up is the fact that Boring Road, it's an old road and it's, it's, it's not being utilized. There needs to be improvements there. And Doug Horn has said, if, if we're granted this and we can build this senior facility, we will contribute to the road improvements along Boring Road, which is another positive. So I just wanted to say that and just kind of give some history. I know some of you all weren't here, you know, 11 years ago when that was brought to our attention, but I remember it vividly and quite well. And I just wanted to kind of, you know, it just, we thought it was interesting how things again are just kind of coming full circle here. So that's really all we had. And if you all have any questions from us, please feel free.
Does anybody on the planning commission have any questions?
For the record, that I was part of that steering committee that helped work, put that land use plan together and some sort of a senior living multifamily component was something that Mr. Horn talked about. We did in fact change the density a couple of years ago in those, in a, in that particular area. There was, there was a rationale of why we felt like that the eight to 12 was, was maybe not as appropriate as what we thought was back in, or six to 12. Back in, we thought it was too big of a range in 2018. And so we did, we did in fact change the land use plan, which, you know, does make it more challenging for you guys to, to fit based upon the density that you're proposing. But I just want to let you know that you are correct. I do have memories of that and I have been involved in this process for a long time with the planning commission and, and do remember, remember those. I don't remember specifically in, in his conference room, but I remember Mr. Horn being a part, part of the, part of the outreach that we did with the town and the citizens.
You know, again, I don't, I'll try to limit my talking here because I know it's late, but at the time, it was the 41 acres. And I do just want to, you know, emphasize that we are asking for 20 acres now. Hopefully, hopefully that's, you know, and, and in doing so, the goal for us was to leave the additional 21 acres to the north of this 20 acres as a buffer. So eventually that will be developed. Doug and myself, we're not saying that that's going to be green space. I, you know, I want to be transparent here, but maybe we're at R2 there or R3 or R1. So there, there is going to be a buffer between the potential senior development and the Baldwin Park development just to the north of us there.
I'm just going to provide a little bit more history to that. In 2017 was when we started the comprehensive land use plan steering committee update. That was, if you look at our policy number two, which was adopted with the original land use plan, the comprehensive land use plan should be updated as often as necessary to remain current. Even if no major changes occur, the plan should undergo a major review and update if appropriate at least once every five years. So it was adopted in December of 2012 and somewhere around March of, March, April, May, I don't remember what it was, 2000, mid 2017. We decided to revisit it in certain corridors. We got through Watt Road and Snyder Outlet and McPhee. And in those conversations, and we'd had conversations previously, that the medium density being six to 12 units per acre was something a lot of residents were concerned about because it was such a wide, wide density range. So that was where that was inspired from. It was certainly, it came from feedback and we amended it at the planning commission level. That was one of our text amendments, along with some of the map amendments that we've done. So just so you have clarity about where that, that was inspired from.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I think that's responsible of any municipality to, to relook at these things because town, I mean, growth, there's always, especially Farragut, we've seen a number of people moving in here. I know in my own neighborhood, I see a lot of California tags and New York tags. So I think that's ultimately a responsible part that you all took. And, you know, you mentioned 2017, so here we are almost four year, four years later and it's almost kind of like, well, we're saying, let's, let's look at it one more time. Not, not the, not the 41 acres, but just the 20. And now that we kind of have a vision, whereas before, you know, you throw this blanket zoning on it and, but, but there's no planning from the landowner. And again, we're developers here, we're not landowners. I want to, I want to make that clear. We, we own it, but, but we develop properties. Doug's developed over 22 million square feet of commercial and thousands of acres of residential. So, you know, as times change and, and communities evolve, you go in and you say, okay, this is a need here. And we truly believe that. We've got people from really all over the southeast that are calling us, hey, we've got this senior development idea that we'd like to do and we'd like to partner up with you. And so we think there's a need here. We truly do. We wouldn't be here before you tonight if we, if we didn't feel that way. And if the, and the demand. And again, this is, this is something too, I want to preface that, you know, you think of multifamily, 900 to 1,200 bucks a month or, I'm not sure what the going rate here is anymore. Things have changed so rapidly over the last six months, it's kind of hard to, to keep up with things. But this particular development is probably a $1,500 to $1,900 a month unit. It's high end. It's, it's looking for people that are having a hard time taking care of their home, mowing the lawn, pulling the weeds, you know, painting the house, that sort of thing. And they want to simplify, simplify things. And they're, they're, the demand is there and in Farragut especially.
There's a whole industry right now in the, in the publishing world of senior living monthly, new senior living. I get about five or six of these magazines, these trade magazines a month. And 10 years ago, those publications, it didn't exist. So that speaks to the popularity of the kind of, kind of thing that we're proposing.
I just wanted to add a few more things to what was in, what's in our land use plan. That was, the language that was originally adopted in the land use plan when it was approved in December 2012. In chapter two, they talk about transitions, which is something we've, we've kind of talked back and forth about. But it states in here, "To protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development and to encourage gradual transitions even with the new development, the following guidelines should be applied. If a density different from the adjacent properties proposed, the transition should occur within the proposed development." And it gives a, for example, "If a new development within a medium density designation were placed next to an existing low density neighborhood, single-family homes should be placed along the common boundary with duplexes and townhomes placed further away from the existing neighborhood." So we already have an example of what they're talking about, what is, seems to be a good transition and a good use in the medium density in our transition language. I will also point out to you, policy number four states, "The base density assumed for the rezoning of a parcel is the lowest density of the designating, designated range." So whether we changed it from six to 12 or left it at, or changed it at six to eight, you were still, the base density assumed for rezoning request was six units per acre. And then the rest of that statement says, "The town will consider granting higher density in the range relative to demonstrated significant public benefits to be achieved by the project." I have to balance what you're saying because I think that senior living is very much in demand and that is a very appropriate place for senior living. But there's all kinds of ways to do senior living. And certainly we have to consider the built environment around it, which is primarily residential and primarily low density, single-family detached residential. And the attached residential is, is low density. The, the attached Village Green duplexes come in at 2.87 units per acre. Boring Road, of course, is for, is R1. Country Way is R2. Village Green is R2. Waverly Court is the densest and that's at 4.37 units per acre. So I think my problem, my struggle is the density and, and the scale and the form, given what the surrounding overwhelmingly, what the surrounding residential built environment is. So that is what I'm struggling with and why I'm leaning towards keeping it medium density for myself. And now I'm going to stop because that's all I had.
Does anybody else on the planning commission have any questions or comments?
It seems to me that, this is something that we've revisited a couple of different times. And I, I think we have a pretty passionate neighborhood base of some adjacent properties that have some concerns here. But it seems to me that there could be some, some horse trading, for lack of a better word, on the rest of your medium density. So you've got medium density that runs all the way up to Boring Road. You've got the, the tract between Waverly Court and Baldwin Park. Then you've got another medium density area identified that, that goes basically up to, I'm going to call it Ben Boring's old barn, which, so it seems to me that, that you might be able to get some support for some higher density down close to the Ingalls if you would, let's say, agree to change and lower the density that you're kind of eligible for on the land use plan up on Boring Road. Maybe it requires a, you know, a couple HOA meetings to see if you've got folks that, that, that kind of are thinking this. Again, I'm one person on the planning commission. I'm not, I cannot speak for anybody else but myself. But you have eligibility in these areas that are six to eight units per acre. And like what Louise said, is generally if you, if you read exactly what it says and you're dealing with other areas that have lower density, you've got to, you've got to yield kind of to the, to the low end of that, which is six units an acre. But quite frankly, six units an acre could, is still a lot of density. If I was a homeowner over there on Boring Road in one of those neighborhoods, six units an acre behind me gives me some concern. And so if I had a developer saying, hey, you know, if, if, if you'll acquiesce to some higher density further away from you, let's say back behind the old Ingalls, and, and you'll agree to kind of reduce your density, and this would probably require a land use plan change and then also a zoning, and then, and you know, determine maybe an, an R2 is probably, you've got some R3 there and you've got R3, which is Baldwin Park. And we're kind of getting on to the next agenda item, but this all keystones together. Both, both of these agenda items tonight, they're all talking about the same property. And you've got some R4 over at Waverly Court. But it seems like, again, that, that there could be some horse trading that could be done to agree to go to a lower density around these other areas. And then you might, you might get some support because I think there may be some concern here that you're asking for this area of higher density, the 20 acres, and then what's to keep you from coming back in a couple of years and say, hey, you know, you said we're, we're eligible for six to eight units on the rest of this. We want to do what the most we can do for six to eight units an acre all the way up to Boring Road. And you might get some support from both the planning commission as well as some of the neighborhoods by doing this. And it's, it's a little difficult to negotiate something like that in, in this particular setting. If it was me, I would, I would meet with some of the HOAs and, and see if, if, if they're, if they think that's a good idea. Now, I may be off in left field and they say, oh, that, that Commissioner Myers is, is an idiot and that's a dumb idea. We're never going to support anything that's higher density down by Ingalls. To me, quite frankly, it meets the transitional zone. And you've got C1 and then maybe you went from C1 to R6, then maybe you started stepping it down to match densities of Baldwin Park, which is R3. It seems to me that meets exactly what transitional zoning is all about. But there is some fear here, I assume there's some fear here by some of the residents that this is just the beginning of, or maybe the, the existing, the senior living, which are villages, you know, maybe they think, well, that was the beginning and now they're asking for this and what's to keep them from going all the way up. So it's just a food for thought that, that might make it more palatable to, to more folks that, that you might still be able to achieve, you know, ultimately the senior living kind of multifamily project that you want.
So apart from future considerations that you're talking about, as, as it looks today, you're mainly talking about the, the boundary marked up there along Boring Road, the lower part of Boring.
Well, no, well, that's not, that's not the agenda item tonight. I guess what I'm doing is, is I can kind of see some concerns and I can hear some concerns on the planning commission. And I can see a lot of folks in the audience with stickers on their chest. And so, you know, and I don't want it to turn into, as a planning commissioner, it's not about a popularity contest. It's about what's fair and consistent, you know, what's compatible with adjacent zoning, what's, what's consistent with the land use plan, what's consistent, what we've done in the past. And so I guess what I'm saying is- And so I guess what I'm saying is, and again, we're not talking about all the way up to Boring Road tonight. But I kind of get the sense that as much as I would like to see a project, kind of what you're describing in this area, I'm one Planning Commissioner, and I don't think the consensus of this board is going to support what you guys are proposing tonight. And what I'm trying to offer you is, maybe there's another way to be able to get your project across the finish line, and maybe you've got, maybe you've got to give a little to take a little to be able to get the density that you like. It may not work. And I'm just throwing it out there. We can't negotiate tonight, because it's not, it's not even a, we're not even talking about the rest of your other property that you guys own up there. But if it was me and I was one of those homeowners, that would be my concern.
Well, I know this is not the place for it, but I'm perfectly willing to meet with any individual homeowners, any HOAs, and talk about possible adjustments to what we've got that might make things more palatable for people.
I think that's what the citizens that are here tonight would like to see. They'd like to see some outreach.
As I mentioned earlier, we do have some citizens that have signed up to speak, so...
And maybe it's time to, and you guys, if y'all want to yield the floor, I think we've got some citizens that'd like to, that have asked to be heard, and they have as much right as the rest of us to be heard, and we'd like to hear what they say if they still want to speak.
Absolutely.
That's fine. Thank you.
Mark has some cards that people have signed up that they would like to speak.
The first one's John Holstrager. Then after him is Michael Wilson. You just have two, I see. Two that have given me blue cards.
Hi, everyone. John Holstrager, three-four-five Burnie Circle in Farragut. I'll be Captain Obvious tonight, with my sticker on, I think you know where I stand, and I've got several community members behind me that are opposed to high-density in this area. I think there's three elephants in the room. First is traffic studies that we've seen are not very believable. They make statements like, "There will be no impact," or "A very negligible impact on Farragut if we do this." If that's the case, I would say, then why do you need to widen or improve Boring Road? There's going to be an impact. Now, if we were a town where we were well under our capacity, I might buy that argument that I've seen these traffic studies make, and you've got more capacity to handle that. But we don't have that. And if you drive in Farragut, if you live in Farragut, you know that there's just not enough capacity for traffic. I think the other one is, What Horn Properties proposing just kind of doesn't make sense. They're proposing dropping something that has very high-density in an area that's almost surrounded by low-density, just doesn't seem to fit to me. And I guess the last thing I would say is that the community, it's kind of worn out over this topic. You know, we've had to listen to Horn Properties tell us for years, for the last six years, how much we need multifamily. Anybody in the room here in favor of multifamily? I don't see them here, maybe they're here without a sticker. But we've played this back to you folks into Boma for many, many years now. We do not want multifamily in this area. And there were some that would say they don't want it in any area in Farragut. You can deed restrict it, you can fancy it up, you can charge a lot per month, but it's still, it's still a property area that would be non-owner occupied, which is what really concerns citizens that I've talked to. I'm in weekly contact with the twenty largest HOAs in Farragut. None of them support this. I don't know how many are represented here tonight, but no one in the HOA community is supportive of this. I'm not saying we won't listen to Horn Properties if they want to come and talk to us, but I don't think you're going to get a lot of support. Personally, I'm not speaking for the community or for Baldwin Park, but I would support a low-density residential development here that has single-family homes. And if Doug were standing here, I would tell him the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to remind you one thing, I've got, everybody's limited to five minutes, so I'm keeping track of that. I just wanted to mention that.
Madam Chair, before I start, can I have a handout for the board to have some diagrams from KGIS in my comments? Michael Wilson, four-one-two Eisenhower Street, Farragut, Tennessee. Good evening. First of all, I'm here speaking as a private citizen, and my comments do not represent any opinions of any groups that I belong to. I've always come before this commission and commented on the consistency of a request with a comprehensive land use plan, and the zoning ordinance in tonight will be no different. In two thousand and fifteen, I led the arguments against the Smith Road Apartments, namely the development's inconsistency with the comprehensive land use plan. Ultimately, that request was denied due to these inconsistencies. In two thousand and eighteen, the town developed a high-density land use description, but has since failed to develop the requisite intent, location, or character descriptions. As well, the town has not reviewed the remaining large vacant parcels to determine which should change to high-density residential. The only updates that this land use description identifies a density of nine to twelve units per acre. Failure to define these characteristics and the lack of parcel designation makes evaluating this request more difficult. To me, the fundamental question is, can this twenty-acre parcel be changed to high-density residential while protecting the existing neighborhoods through the appropriate density transition? Per Exhibit A of the resolution, Horn's Properties is retaining a medium-density residential tract of land to act as a transition between its high-density residential development and the lower-density properties. This approach is consistent with the plan as it transitions density from the commercial development along Kingston Pike to higher-density residential, giving way to medium- and lower-density residential properties to the north. The second concern is about the actual density of both the high-density and the medium-density residential areas. The transition policy on page twelve of the land use plan does not clearly define gradual or compatible. For example, there is no specific formula that addresses the maximum density differences of two adjacent and differing land uses that have a common property line. Recent history shows the FMPC and Boma have liberally applied the transition requirements to different situations. In two thousand and sixteen, the FMPC approved a recommendation allowing one hundred and fifty feet of open space and Union Road to be an appropriate transition between Property Zone C1 Commercial and Very Low Density Residential R2. The recommendation was for the prior Swan Farm development that never came to fruition. The current Swan Farm development provides a transition from the commercial portion of the property using a medium-density residential and Union Road, excuse me, a medium-density residential equivalent, and Union Road as a transition to Very Low Density Residential to the north. The overlooked apartment property was rezoned R6 and is adjacent to an existing R2 parcel that contains a private school. Finally, the FMPC and Board of Mayor and Alderman approved the Kingston Pike Village request that placed a planned commercial development district adjacent to a property currently zoned Very Low Residential R1. The last two examples do have unique circumstances, including topography and the type of surrounding development. Of these three, the Swan Farm example is the closest example to tonight's situation. Based on these previous approvals, it seems reasonable that surrounding this high-density residential development with a road and then subsequent medium-density residential development is a suitable transition inconsistent with the CLUP and the recent FMPC decisions. Unlike two thousand and fifteen, I don't believe this transition should be a reason to deny this request. Thank you. And I would say one more thing. The diagrams show you those, are from KGIS, and show those areas where I described the different types of densities that have been approved by the board and by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the commission and the board. Thank you.
That's all I have on this particular agenda item.
Mark, you had said something about a change. Are we voting on this tonight?
Yeah, it's up for a vote, yep. The way it's crafted, as with any resolution, is, resolution, if you support it, you vote yes. I mean, you know, if you don't, you'd need to be clear about that you don't support it. And then if people agree with that, then they would vote yes, because that would be the motion that they would be following. So if that makes sense.
We need a motion from somebody.
It's pretty clear to me, but maybe I didn't describe it very clear.
Once we have a motion, we'll figure out how to proceed.
Does anybody have a motion?
No.
Nope.
So, Mark, do, are we?
If else.
A motion even though we're going to vote it down.
Well, I mean, they offered to have a discussion with the people that live around them.
Well, the motion can be to defer. But I mean, that's, you've got to have a motion. You've got an application.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the amendment to the future land use map.
I second that. Hold on.
All those in favor?
Mark's got something to say.
What's the motion?
My motion is to deny...
Wasn't loud enough to hear.
...the amendment to the future land use plan.
To deny.
To deny.
Motion is to deny resolution.
Motion is to deny.
PC dash twenty-one dash eleven. And who was the second on that? St. Clair? So if you agree with that, you would vote yes. If you disagree, you would vote no.
So a roll call vote?
You need me to do a roll call?
Yes, it does. Need to be.
Commissioner Myers?
No.
Commissioner Russ?
Oh, yes, to deny.
Okay, yes, okay. Commissioner Green?
Yes, to deny.
Mayor Williams?
Mayor Williams is yes, to deny.
Chairman Holliday?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Yes, to deny.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellamy?
Aye, to deny.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to deny passes eight to one.
So we don't really need to have much discussion on the next one. I'll just make a motion that it's to deny based on the fact that it's not consistent with the land use plan.
Let me take a roll call on that one, too.
Can you repeat your motion?
Louise?
Motion to deny the request for the zoning map amendment based on the fact that it's not consistent with the land use plan.
Okay.
There are citizen comments for item eleven.
Oh, yeah, we do have one.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Did have one for Michael Wilson, number eleven.
Again, Michael Wilson, four-one-two Eisenhower Street, Farragut, Tennessee. Good evening again. As discussed in the previous item, I led arguments against the Smith Road Apartments in two thousand and fifteen. This was my first involvement in the planning and development issues, and I quickly learned that you must make decisions based on the town's ordinances and the comprehensive land use plan. As it happens in these discussions, in two thousand and fifteen, many residents raised arguments regarding traffic, schools, noise and light pollution, crime, et cetera. However, we learned that in order to prevail, we must debate the consistency of a request with the town's ordinances and plans. Adherence to these documents provides for fair and equitable treatment of all landowners and developers. Ultimately, in two thousand and fifteen, the final argument came when I showed that the Smith Road Apartment site plan would not be consistent with the comprehensive land use and other town plans as required in the R6 zoning ordinance. Mr. Horn would probably agree that this was the final nail in the coffin. In looking at the current proposal, and again, this is based on approval of the last item, I took the same approaches back in two thousand and fifteen. I asked a question that you should ask yourself. Does this request support the strategies, and does it align with the comprehensive land use plan and the R6 zoning ordinance? With respect to the land use plan, this development supports four of eight strategies. The development addresses Strategy Three, encouraging grading housing choice. The developer's willingness to make this a fifty-plus community provides a housing choice not found elsewhere in Farragut. The additional residences in this area would help attract and retain businesses within the Old Ingles Shopping Center, furthering Strategy Two, repairing aging shopping centers. The internal connection to and improvements of Boring Road, along with the potential new walking trail connections, address Strategy Four, increasing connectivity. Finally, the request addresses Strategy Eight, planning for the remaining parcels. The development is consistent with the statement, quote, "Farragut's vacant land provides the best opportunity to move beyond traditional suburban development patterns to achieve land uses that will bring about a more complete community," unquote. This senior apartment community is unique to the town. It is consistent with the surrounding land uses and will, quote, "Help Farragut provide a greater range of housing options." As discussed during the previous agenda item, there are no high-density land use description characteristics to consider other than density. Often, people argue approval provides the opportunity to develop at the maximum density twelve units per acre. This is only true if the developer can comply with all of the requirements in the town's plans, the applicable zoning ordinance, and the development manual. Many restrictions, such as setbacks, height restrictions relevant to other less-dense developments, et cetera, will impact the final density. The R6 zoning ordinance general description says, "This district," quote, "This district shall serve as a transition area between more intense land uses or major roads and less intense land uses." It is clear from Attachment A of Agenda Item Number Ten and the concept plan that this development will provide for such a transition between the commercial property to the south and the lower-density neighborhoods to the north. I started my comments tonight by stating, "I've always come before this board or before this commission and commented on the consistency of a request with the comprehensive land use plan and zoning ordinance." Based on my analysis, I believe this request supports several of the comprehensive land use plan strategies and is consistent with the plan and the ordinance. And one more comment, I lived in Roseville, California before I moved to Tennessee, an area much like Farragut. We had multiple of these complexes. They were highly-desired properties. They sat right in the middle. They were not a typical apartment complex. And I am disappointed in the vote tonight, because I do believe this actually had been three years ago. As a developer said, had this been three years ago, you would approve this, because the medium-density was changed. I was part of that steering committee when it first stood up. The problem was, this commission and that steering committee never went back and looked at the vacant parcels and made a determination on to redesignate them or not. That was what was supposed to happen back in two thousand and seventeen, when I sat on that commission, when I started. I only lasted about six months because of the time of meeting. But the town has failed on that point. Three years ago, this would have been approved, because it would have met the requirements. That change has undergirded this, and I am disappointed. I appreciate Mr. Myers. I appreciate you taking a look at it and actually, you know, thinking through that. And maybe the developer can go back and redesign and come up with something that will work. Thank you.
My suggestion would be there to get with the people that, we've got a lot of people in the room here that's got opinions, and they could be helpful to the developer and his staff, because they have ideals as well. So that would probably be a good start, I think, before it would come back to us.
Is there any discussion on that? I know we already had a motion.
We've got a motion in a second.
Yeah, we had a motion. Povlin, and second by Commissioner St. Clair, to deny resolution PC dash twenty-one dash ten. So if you are ready for a roll call.
Ready.
Commissioner Myers?
No.
Commissioner Russ?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Mayor Williams, yes.
Chairman Holliday?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellamy? Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
And that passes by a vote of eight to one. Okay. That'll be taken, I guess, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the zoning map amendment request, with the recommendation of denial.
Moving on to item number twelve, approval of utilities.
Not have any utilities, no. And I do not have any citizen form.
That was my next question. No. No.
I would suggest we also get these facts together.
August, not July fifteenth. I can't keep up with the days of the week, the day of the month, or the month.
I can't keep up with the days of the week, the day of the month, or the month.
I knew, I knew I wasn't going to get any early. But I was part of those meetings. I was part of those meetings. I, I, I don't know. What's your point? You've taken this factoid, that factoid, and they don't come together whatsoever.
Well, there's been, you know, something dies for a line of motion.
That's fair. That's fair. So we knew what they needed. They saw what the opposite was. That was their comfort factor in doing what they did to Biden. It would have died at the, at the initial motion.
Exactly. It would have died and never been able to vote. Certainly not. It would have been a second.
Actually, I was. It was just very lovely. I think I sometimes like.
The way of the, of the motions and at the end, like we used to. Instead of doing the most.
Say hello. No, I shouldn't say hello.
That's a question from Mark, because I've asked him that before, because I thought he would come back with a different request.
Yeah. You guys are really good at that, you two. Oh, gee.
It's truly life on a scale, or life brought us here, or two, because it was 2011.
My wife is taking my son to Citadel for a college visit, and they're leaving at 6:00 AM.
We're places to the, we do it, we're small places. I'm leaving myself. We used to go out to eat and do our own things this weekend.
Yeah, that'll be fun. Enjoy.
Good night, Bella.
She ain't welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Thanks. Glad to be here.
We've lost a lively discussion. And a pleasure having you here.
That was, hey. I'm here for it, and I took all these.
So the good news is tonight, we don't need bodyguards going into the parking lot.
No, I'm here for it. And I met with Mark.
In the clock, that's pretty good.
I had all my questions in my packet, and I met with him yesterday, so I could ask him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Feel that.
I noticed that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm here, they go to each other. No, I like to throw stuff. I started smiling. At one point, I just started smiling. I'm like, okay, we are so off topic.
You are, you are entertaining, but you're going to have to, you're going to have to come with a little bit more comic relief if you're going to have that much extra time to the meetings. I need a few more jokes in there.
I appreciate all of that, because I'm learning each time.
He's got such a man crush on you, he's right next to you.
Hey, you would do a self, yeah, I'm good to go. Where's he going with this? Exactly. Hey, Ron, go ahead and give me that part, part of that file. I'll help you sign it. Is this mine?
Yes. I did give you one.
Okay. Really great. Vice Mayor Povlin?
Thank you.
I'm grateful.
I was telling Blaine's, that, that, I didn't put in my mileage. I told her things that, I didn't put in my mileage. She said, well, you ought to do that.
Yeah. You're burning gas. I mean, you're in a bar. I'm burning a lot more than gas. We don't run out of video tapes. Trying to be. Brain cells and liver cells and. Hold on. There's, there's, there's. If it goes much longer, I gotta go hunt down snacks, a pack of crackers and stuff, too.
That's always, I was like, are they going to call for snacks? When do the snacks come out?
The guy that used to be.
I see you two have a plan to come tomorrow, so get out of here.
While I'm here, I guess. Well, I was going to say, too, with that, I reserve the turkey. I didn't really understand the land use plan. No, I didn't. I didn't go to the meetings. I don't know.
She was just sitting out there, complaining about stuff they had, or whatever.
Where's the, where's the?
It's going for, uh, sometimes when you're on the floor.
Maybe it's.
Right. Well, you can't review the meeting minutes, so.
That's all you got. Funny, it's getting, getting here. That's all news. Oh, I don't know if anything. They're.